Welcome to today's program titled ERISA Back-to-School Study Session: Key Cases and Trends for Fall 2025. At this time, all participants are in a listen-only mode. For those of you who are logged into the live web presentation, you are encouraged to submit questions throughout the conference by typing them into the Q&amp;A box on the right-hand side of your screen. For those interested in obtaining CLE credit for this webinar, later in the presentation, we will read the CLE Attendance Verification Code. Please write this code down, as it will not be reread, and it is required on the CLE Credit Request Form. During the program, you will also see a slide with a QR code that you may scan to access and submit your request for CLE credit. You can also find a link to this form in the connection details email you received this morning. Copies of the webinar recording and materials will be distributed to all attendees within a day or two following the webinar. On the next slide, you will see a legal disclaimer. This presentation has been prepared by Syfarth Shaw LLP for informational purposes only. The material discussed during this webinar should not be construed as legal advice or a legal opinion on any specific facts or circumstances. The content is intended for general information purposes only, and you are urged to consult a lawyer concerning your own situation and any specific legal questions you may have. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our first speaker for today's program, Ian Morrison. Ian, please go ahead.
Thanks, Kate. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our back-to-school edition of our periodic series of webinars on our risk litigation developments. I'm thrilled to be joined today by two members of Syfarth Shaw's Nationwide ERISA Litigation Team. Amanda Genovese is a partner in our New York office, and as you will hear later on in the program, a leading expert on health benefits litigation. Jules Levinson is senior counsel in our Chicago office and also a specialist on appellate matters, as you will hear as well. So we're thrilled to be here on behalf of the firm's Nationwide ERISA Litigation Practice. Our practice was recently recognized in Chambers Legal 500 and Best Lawyers as one of the leading practices nationwide. And we owe that, of course, to our many clients and friends who have joined us today. So hopefully you'll find this an informative webinar, and feel free to ask questions as we go along. Next slide, please, Kate. This is our agenda. We've got a lot to cover today, but we'll sort of whip through some of the latest developments in the ERISA litigation class action world, talk about what's percolating at the Courts of Appeals, and also talk about trends and developments and strategies in healthcare reimbursement. So, next slide, and we can go down another one. We are almost celebrating the 20th anniversary of what some might call the modern era of ERISA litigation, which started in 2006 with a barrage of 401(k) class actions, which have continued pretty much unchecked since then. And as we'll discuss, and I think for some reasons that will be evident from the program, the pace of filings has picked up. According to our count, there are at least 100 ERISA litigation class actions filed so far this year, most of those in the 401(k) space. Typical claims are brought against plan fiduciaries relating to service provider selection and monitoring as well as investment options, but we've got newer claims that are coming out relating to plan forfeitures, and now attacks on stable value funds, which seem to be taking advantage of changes in the marketplace, which makes some stable value funds appear to underperform when compared to different funds. More and more plaintiff firms are getting into this business, partly fueled, I think, by technology and firms that market class actions to law firms. And so we're seeing more and more entrance into the space. And the ills of class action litigation have spread vigorously to the defined benefit world as well, which used to not be as much of a target. There are challenges to mortality tables, and now a spate of pension risk transfer suits. So, next slide. We've tried to capture some of the data just on what's going on in these cases. As I mentioned, the flow of cases has continued unchecked. The settlement pace is also pretty strong. I would say that as a general matter, settlements, particularly in the 401(k) cases, have tended now to move to the very small end of the spectrum. It's pretty common now to see settlements under $1 million in these class actions, and those are largely driven, in our experience, by defense costs. Plaintiff lawyers know that it's expensive to defend these cases, and if they can survive for a little bit, get past a motion to dismiss, there's settlement value there that they're really looking to capitalize on. Next slide. Jules, if you want to take us through some of the developments on the pleading standards in 401(k) cases.
Thank you, Ian. And further to Ian's point, there has been, over the last few years, a rise, a significant rise in ERISA class action filings. And one of what we've seen as a key driver of that increase is a Supreme Court decision from 2022 in Hughes versus Northwestern University. Facts aren't especially important now, but the quick background is there were participants in the university's 403(b) defined contributions plans that alleged that they were charged excessive fees and that their investment options were too expensive. The district court granted a motion to dismiss, and Seventh Circuit, following its then-existing case law, which had relied heavily on participants' ability to choose expensive or less expensive investments as they saw fit, affirmed the dismissal. Supreme Court granted review and ultimately reversed the Seventh Circuit decision, or more accurately, vacated it, and said, "Seventh Circuit, you're wrong. Plans have to be a little more attuned to how expensive their offerings are." They can't just rely on plan participants to say, "Okay, I want a more expensive fund, so we're going to offer a bunch of more expensive funds, or I want a less expensive fund." So as long as they have the choice, some of the prior Seventh Circuit case law had allowed that. And the Supreme Court said, "No, it's a little easier for plaintiffs to plausibly allege a breach of fiduciary duty claim." And in fact, Seventh Circuit itself, on remand, allowed two of those claims to proceed, one on record-keeping and one on record-keeping fees and one on share-class fees. And Hughes has kind of kicked off a sort of progression of cases that have tried to figure out what the standard, what the correct standard is. What is the bar for an excessive-fee class action? Next slide, please. And one of the sort of key points of why it matters to companies or to plans to have what the standard for motion to dismiss is, that costs in an excessive-fee class action vary significantly from the motion to dismiss stage and then moving on into discovery. Once a claim gets past the motion to dismiss, discovery can get very costly because there are years of plan records, meeting minutes, emails, communications between plan fiduciaries, looking at all of the minutia of what was the plan thinking or what were the fiduciaries thinking when they made this decision or that decision. So a case that can be dismissed at the pleading stage is significantly less valuable to plaintiff's counsel than a case that can get past a motion to dismiss. And as I said, over the last few years, there's been sort of a range of decisions of the courts, both at the district court level and the Court of Appeals level, as to where exactly the line falls for a plausible excessive-fee claim or a plausible breach of fiduciary duty claim. And some of that is fact-bound, but some of that is also courts saying, "How much detail do we want plaintiffs to allege in saying there was or was not, in saying there was a breach of fiduciary duty?" So it's possible that we're going to get some further guidance from the Supreme Court. There is currently pending a petition for cert in a case from the Sixth Circuit. The Sixth Circuit decision was Johnson v. Parker Hanifin at the Supreme Court. Parker Hanifin is the petitioner. And Johnson had reversed dismissal of claims regarding imprudent retention of investments and claims that the plan should have used lower-cost share classes of certain investments that it offered to participants. And there were two key points from the Sixth Circuit's decision in Johnson. One is that the Sixth Circuit looked at the claims and said, "Well, plaintiffs have alleged that these investments that you included had problems. They were, they had high turnover of the underlying investments, and they underperformed as compared to relevant benchmarks." And the Sixth Circuit looked at that and said, "That's enough. This is a decision of foresight. This is something that the fiduciaries could have known at the time that they were making the decision whether to maintain the investments. And so therefore, that's, we're going to let that claim go forward." And the Sixth Circuit also let go forward claims that the plan should have used cheaper share classes because even though there was a published investment minimum that the plan didn't meet, the Sixth Circuit has a couple of cases now that say, "If your plan's really big, you should try harder to get cheaper investments." And so we'll see if the Supreme Court weighs it. Next slide, please. The flip side of that is a recent Ninth Circuit decision, Anderson versus Intel, where the Ninth Circuit affirmed a dismissal with prejudice. The, there are certainly factual distinctions there. There's, the complaint didn't really have quite the type of comparisons that the Sixth Circuit complaint had. Part of that had to do with the type of investments that were being offered by the plan. And so the Ninth Circuit said, "Well, since you didn't have a good enough comparator, there's not enough, there's not enough there to say that there was actually a fiduciary breach." And the plaintiffs in Anderson also tried a tactic that is not infrequent, where complaints will try to insinuate that there's something nefarious afoot of a conflict of interest of some sort, whether or not that conflict actually exists. And the Ninth Circuit said, "You didn't get there. You said that the, these investments potentially could have had some benefit to the company or to another arm of the company, but you didn't actually allege that there were any facts showing that that, that anyone was connected or that there was any consideration of that particular issue in choosing the investments." So they affirm the dismissal. Next slide, please. So sort of the bottom line for the pleading standards is there's both different approaches and different facts. The Supreme Court has asked the Solicitor General in the Johnson case to file a brief. So that suggests that there's some interest in the Supreme Court hearing the case. It's not a guarantee that the Supreme Court will grant cert, but if the Solicitor General suggests that the Supreme Court should hear the case, there's a pretty high likelihood that it will. And ultimately, we'll see what happens because a cert grant could help lower courts untangle where exactly they're supposed to be going in letting these claims go forward or not. Next slide, please. And very briefly, in addition to the excessive-fee cases, there's another genre of cases that have popped up over the last couple of years concerning defined benefit plans that are trying to offer pension risk. And the way they do that is they, instead of paying out pensions directly from the plan, they buy an annuity, and then whoever the insurance company that is responsible for that annuity pays out on the future benefit payments. There's some, there's not a ton of case law on how the fiduciary breach standards apply there. There's a recent case in Massachusetts that goes, it's a fairly extensive case. I'll only address it at high level. Next slide, please. That looks at both, the case in Massachusetts looks at both the standing and merits. And the court there has addressed two points that are both fairly recurring in these pension risk transfer cases. On standing, the court said, "Well, there's enough that, there's some, the plaintiffs are alleging an injury here because you're saying they could have selected a less risky, a less risky annuity, but they selected a more risky annuity, which according to them, gives them a higher risk of not getting paid than if the pension had stayed in-house. So that's enough to a certain injury. But on the merits, the court said, "You didn't get there. There wasn't, there weren't actually factual allegations similar to the Anderson case of an actual conflict of interest or a failure to conduct an appropriate inquiry." So the court, it's actually a magistrate judge reporting recommendation recommends denying, they're sorry, let's say granting, recommended dismissing the case on the merits because of a lack of plausible allegations of fiduciary breach. And the case, depending on how it goes forward, could be a very important one in giving a template to other courts as to how they approach these pension risk transfer cases. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Jules. So where does this leave us? Sort of summarize on the pleading standard issue. I think everyone hoped the Supreme Court in Hughes would give some definitive guidance and explain in more detail what needed to be alleged. They didn't do that, and the courts are now struggling again with the question. So hopefully we get some further guidance from the Supreme Court in the Parker Hanifin case, or at least more uniformity among the appellate circuits. One defense that sort of comes to the fore in these cases generally is standing. There's a decision from the Supreme Court from several years ago, full in the defined benefit context, that is often brought up because it says famously, "There's no ERISA exception to standing as a requirement." And even though that's in the defined benefit context, courts have, at the urging of defendants, have been applying that doctrine to 401(k) cases as well with inconsistent results, and as Jules just said, in the pension risk transfer cases. And it brings to mind, I think, when these litigations started, that there was a lot of activity around the 404(c) defense to argue that, you know, if you satisfied 404(c) of ERISA, you could shift the responsibility for investment issues to the plaintiffs. Standing seems to have solidly replaced that and done a better job in defending cases. And I think it's fueled by a couple of things. One, these cases are largely theoretical. Few plaintiffs actually are harmed enough to bring any claim on their own, and these are brought by lawyers who are looking to invent a legal theory. Secondly, the Supreme Court loves the issue of standing. It's a doctrine that comes out of the notion of a limited function judiciary and allows the courts to sort of police what's in front of them. And even the recent Cornell decision that we'll mention later, the court invokes standing as one possible solution to the problems raised by the defense in that case. Jury trials continue to be a threat as well, as we'll cover later on. There's a lot of activity around whether or not there is a jury trial, which would certainly up the leverage for the plaintiffs in these cases. Next slide. So settlements, as I mentioned earlier, have continued. We tallied up roughly $170 million so far, paid out this year in settlements in 401(k) cases. Even though that suggests a fairly large average settlement amount, I think it's skewed by a couple of relatively larger cases. And the settlement pace is continuing at about the same speed as before. I think there's some of these newer groups you'll see fewer settlements in. So in the forfeiture cases, for example, there have not been very many settlements because plaintiffs and defendants are really waiting for guidance from the courts on whether those claims are viable, which we may get coming up in the next several months from the Ninth Circuit. Next slide. But not everything's settled. There have been at least four summary judgment wins this year for defendants in 401(k) class actions. The decisions really reflect a willingness to find prudence. It seems like when district courts dig into these cases, they apply the broad standard, which is about process for prudence, and look holistically at the record. The plaintiff's bar often tries to identify periodic or isolated errors in process and gaps in the process. And courts generally have not been persuaded by those assertions and have looked more holistically at whether or not the defendants and the fiduciaries of the 401(k) plan are really engaging in a process broadly to police what's prudent and not prudent in the plan. There have also been, at least since mid-'23, six trial wins for defendants, including more or less one jury trial. The jury trial win, the jury actually returned a verdict that said, "There was a breach, but there was no damage." So in my book, that's a win, but the decision's up on appeal, and we'll certainly see how that shakes out. At trial, the themes continue, and I think there are a couple of interesting dynamics in these cases when they get to trial. One is, all of the witnesses of the facts are defense witnesses. Plaintiffs seldom, if ever, have a witness that they control who can talk about what the fiduciaries did. So they will present their clients, who are participants, who have little to say or nothing to say about what happened in the case that's relevant, and they'll present experts. And the experts are often called to task by courts for overreaching or for having shoddy analysis or for having mismatched analysis. And there's a recent decision out of the District of Massachusetts from earlier this year in a trial victory for the defense, where the court goes through in great detail both what it refers to as a wholesale theory, whether the plan as a matter of wholesale analysis is prudently managed and finds based on the use of consultants, regular meetings, thorough analysis, that the plan is generally well-managed, and then goes through investment by investment, the challenged investments, and finds ultimately no violation of prudence or loyalty as to any of those investments. And that was a case which was probably more challenging for the defense because it involved what we refer to as proprietary investments, investments sponsored by the plan sponsor. So the plaintiffs also argued that there was disloyalty. The one claim on which the court found a lack of prudence was one in which the committee had concluded that an investment probably should be removed, but then didn't act fast enough to get it out of the plan. And the court said, "Really, you had a year-and-a-half period where you should have gotten this fund out of the plan, and you didn't." But still ruled for the defense because the plaintiffs hadn't presented a damage model that matched that period of liability. So some things to think about if you're heading to trial or considering how to perceive one of these cases. Next slide, please. So I think the key takeaways are, this is going to continue. The courts are somewhat receptive to these cases, and plaintiffs are certainly bringing them at a large volume. So as we'll see in the coming slides, there are some levers that may be pressed that might shape that. But for now, I think we're going to be facing continued litigation. Space. Next slide. And the next slide. So as I mentioned before, on summary judgment, courts are generally, I think, skeptical of plaintiff arguments about isolated instances of process failures. So for example, if a committee is supposed to meet every quarter and misses a quarter, that's not going to carry much weight. The courts also look broadly at process rather than looking at results. And attacks on experts work. One of the summary judgment decisions this year turned largely, I think, on the fact that the court excluded the plaintiff's expert. And so the plaintiffs had very little to rely on in arguing that there was imprudence or damage to the plan. So you'll often see expert attacks coupled with a summary judgment motion. And the same continues if we go to the next slide. In thinking about trial, as I mentioned, trial is sort of a lopsided exercise because the fact witnesses all come from one side, and the experts can be challenged in both directions. But I would say the plaintiffs have a bigger challenge in presenting to the courts credible expert testimony. And in our experience, really, the experts for the plaintiff's side tend to overreach, and I think be susceptible to pressure from their counsel to go further than they should, and that calls them into question with the courts. Next slide. So I'm going to flip it back over to Jules for the delightfully technical area of prohibited transactions.
Thanks, Ian. And before I get into prohibited transactions, I would add one other item on the expert point that Ian was making, which is that a lot of times, the plaintiff's experts are, a lot of the experts in the field, but especially the plaintiff's experts are repeat players. And it can often be very helpful to go back and look at what they said or did in another case. And there are often fertile avenues for attacking the expert based on either inconsistency or sort of a lack of coherence between positions in different cases. So as Ian said, ERISA's prohibited transactions provisions are very detailed. If you read them literally, which is potentially an issue here, you can, a plan can do very little. And one thing that plaintiff's counsel have turned to, as they've had varying success with other types of cases, is because the prohibited transactions provisions are so broad, it can be a lot easier to plausibly allege a claim that a plan engaged in a prohibited transaction. Next slide, please. So this is one part of the prohibited transactions section of ERISA, Section 406, 29 U.S.C. 1106. And it lists out all of the different types of transactions the fiduciaries can't cause, these are non-self-dealing transactions, but a variety of transactions the fiduciaries cannot cause their plan to engage in. And if you look at the language, it's pretty broad. For example, if you look at subsection D there, "Transfer to or used by for the benefit of a party in interest of any assets in the plan," or "any assets of the plan." Or in C, "Furnishing of goods or services between a plan and a party in interest." Well, that sounds awfully like that if you tell your current service provider or your record keeper who's a party in interest, because they already provide services to the plan, that you want to renew your contract. Well, that sounds like it could be a transaction that is a furnishing of services between a plan and a party in interest. And recognizing the breadth of that language, there's been this sort of looming question over the years of, are plaintiffs, say, state a prohibited transaction claim just by saying, "You renewed your record keeper," or "You paid the record keeper money." And one aspect of that has been appellate decisions that are, that were and are increasingly taking the statute literally. Next slide, please. ERISA has a lot of exceptions to the prohibited transaction language, both what we just showed you in 1106(a) and the self-dealing transactions in 1106(b). But those exceptions are principally located in a different section, Section 1108. And one sort of through-line in prohibited transaction litigation over the years has been to view prohibited transaction exceptions as affirmative defenses. And because of that, typically, when you have an affirmative defense, the plaintiff only has to allege the elements of a claim, and then the defense has to show the elements of the affirmative defense. But again, at the pleading stage, the affirmative defenses don't enter into it. So there were sort of two lines of cases pre the most recent Supreme Court decision, Cunningham versus Cornell. One, which is epitomized by the Ninth Circuit's 2023 decision. And Bucelinski said, "Nope, you just have to allege a prohibited transaction. You just have to look at what 1106 says. And if you can show that there was, if you can plausibly allege that there was a transaction between the plan and a party in interest, you stay in the claim, and you can get into very expensive discovery." Other courts... Other courts, including the Second Circuit and the Cunningham case itself, had read various limitations into the prohibited transactions claim. So even though they agreed that, to a large extent, the 1108 exceptions are affirmative defenses, there was various parsing of the language, of the statutory language to say, no, plaintiffs can't just allege that there was a renewal of a party in interest to get past a motion dismissed. There has to be something more. So for example, the Second Circuit's standard in Cunningham was that it wasn't just the furnishing of services, it also had to be an unnecessary transaction or an unreasonable compensation piece of the transaction. So the plaintiffs had to have something more than just the transaction happened. Next slide, please. And last year, the Supreme Court heard the Cunningham case to resolve the circuit split and ultimately said, there are a lot of really good policy reasons why it's ridiculous to let plaintiffs bring a claim that says you violated ERISA because you hired a record keeper, when almost all big plans have a record keeper. But these policy issues can't get past, can't get past the statutory text. And we read the statutory text to say that 1106 has the elements, 1108 has affirmative defenses, so plaintiffs just have to allege the elements. And next slide, please. And the Supreme Court, in making its decision, recognized that there is a significant potential that when all you have to do to bring a claim is say that a plan entered into a transaction that plans enter into on a regular basis every day that have no issues, there are potential possibilities of unscrupulous or excessive or frivolous even litigation. And Supreme Court outlined a couple of tools that district courts might be able to use to get rid of some of those less meritorious claims. One, as Ian mentioned earlier, is focusing on standing. So even though the plaintiffs can allege a statutory violation, the Supreme Court over the years has gotten significantly more strict on plaintiffs actually showing that they were injured. So it isn't enough, the Supreme Court said, to say that there was a plan that hired a record keeper, they also have to explain why they were injured by that. That has the possibility of taking out sort of the low-hanging fruit, but a lot of plaintiffs' counsel also have fairly creative arguments of, well, it's a prohibited transaction and my client was injured because you could have gotten the record keeping or something less than what you paid for it. And it's still an open question as to how strictly district courts will police the standing requirements for prohibited transaction claims, whether it's enough to say you could have gotten the same services for a lot less without much detail, or whether courts are going to require plaintiffs to give a little, put a little more meat on the bones and say, no, this comparison isn't close enough. You have to get a little closer as to what the plan's provider offered versus what your comparator offered that was allegedly cheaper. Supreme Court also referred to a rather arcane provision of the rules of civil procedure that allows courts to order a reply to an answer and then for a court to decide on the pleadings whether an exemption applies. All that's going to work in practice is quite frankly unclear. The replies to answers are anything but routine in federal court. Certain states require replies as a matter of course. The federal rules do not require it, and frankly, they're something of a unicorn. So how and if courts will apply Rule 787 to require a reply is also up in the air. Then two other, two other possibilities the Supreme Court pointed to are Rule 11 sanctions and ERISA fee shifting. Sanctions are probably only going to weed out the most frivolous, the most baseless lawsuits, and fee shifting, it again remains to be seen how helpful it will be. Historically, courts have been hesitant to fee shift and charge an individual plaintiff, the fees incurred by a plan or a plan sponsor, unless there's really nothing to the claims at all, and even then, courts are hesitant to award fees against individual plaintiffs. But given the low statutory standard for pleading a claim, it's quite possible that there's going to be some shifting among lower courts, but it's very much an open question. Next slide, please. So given that this sort of issue is out there, plan sponsors and fiduciaries should probably, and their attorneys if they're sued, should think long and hard about how to position the case in a way that it can be addressed quickly, either at the pleading stage or after the pleading stage with limited expense to avoid getting into full-blown discovery dispute over, or full-blown discovery issues over a case that has very little merit once you take exemptions into account. And one important thing is going to have ready access to the facts that establish exemptions. So to the extent that a plan fiduciary has decided that an exemption applies, having clear documentation of, and contemporaneous documentation of why the fiduciary is thinking the exemption applies, what steps they took to investigate that would be very helpful. And for similar reason, having those documents available for discovery might make it more plausible that a court would say, okay, I'm going to get it past a motion to dismiss, but we're not going to go into full-blown discovery here. Maybe we'll look at only whether the exemption applies, or maybe we're going to have limited discovery before a motion for judgment on the pleadings to see if the exemption applies before the case gets into a more full-blown litigation. And those are potential strategies for trying to counteract what is a somewhat lenient pleading standard right now. Next slide, please. And with that, I will flip it back over to Ian.
So I'm going to, in the interest of time, sort of compress a couple of concepts. The general rule in ERISA cases is you get no jury trial. That is the rule everywhere except the Second Circuit, which will allow a jury trial in certain kinds of ERISA cases. And that's because there's no right to a jury trial in ERISA, but under the Constitution, you have a right to a jury trial in a case at law. And the court in the Second Circuit, based on a Supreme Court decision called Great West from several years ago, took a very narrow view of what was equitable relief and said essentially, most of the damages that are at issue in these class action cases are, or most of the relief that's at issue in the class action cases are damages, that's legal, you can have a jury trial. And as we've seen, there have been a few of them in the Second Circuit, including a win for the defense back in 2023, and actually this year, a win for the plaintiffs. The issue is up on appeal a couple of ways in the Second Circuit, whether or not there's a right to a jury trial, but it's closely related to the issue of what is or is not legal relief. And if we can go down to slide 31, there's a case out of the Sixth Circuit called, actually go down two more, called Aldridge, which wades into the question of what is equitable relief? The Supreme Court in the Amara case had a long dictum in which it talked about the possible equitable remedies that could exist under ERISA, and since then, many courts have allowed plaintiffs to pursue what's referred to as surcharge, basically equitable damages. And the Sixth Circuit and the Fourth Circuit are two courts that have said no to that and that said essentially based on the subsequent Supreme Court case called Montanil, that to be equitable damages really have to be much more narrow and traceable to particular fund or particular conduct, and that broad damages sought by plaintiffs in these cases are legal relief, which of course feeds into the jury trial question. And so while the narrowing of equitable remedies may be a good thing, it may also create some challenges for defendants. And then if we could skip ahead to slide 35, I just want to touch briefly on trends in arbitration. Arbitration, the general principle is you can arbitrate ERISA cases, you can make people arbitrate ERISA cases. Defendants in these cases have tried to prohibit class arbitration or arbitration that would provide for plan-wide remedies, and the courts have uniformly rejected those attempts and said that they essentially operate to limit the substantive remedies that plaintiffs can get in violation of principles under the Federal Arbitration Act. There's a recent decision from the Ninth Circuit that is interesting because it covers the question of who has to agree to arbitration, which is sort of a fundamental part of the analysis, and says that for purposes of a benefit claim type of action, the participant has to agree, and you can't just amend your plan to insist on arbitration without having some further notice or consent by them. But in the case of a derivative claim like one under ERISA Section 502a2, the plan has to agree, and then the question becomes, are you depriving people of their substantive remedies? So arbitration remains a challenging area for plan sponsors who may be considering it, and there's a lot of pros and cons to whether or not you should agree to arbitration or try to enforce arbitration provisions in plans. And I think certainly worth watching. And if we can go ahead then to slide 40, Jules is going to touch on a couple of pending appellate matters as well.
Very briefly, there are a couple other cases that we're watching, ones at the Supreme Court. Next slide, please. M&amp;K Employee Solutions. It's a case about withdrawal liability when employers who are participants in multi-employer pension funds withdraw, they have to pay their portion of unfunded benefits, and there's currently a circuit split as to the procedures that plans can use to compute that liability. Supreme Court granted cert on that at the end of the term. Decision's expected by the end of the term in June, and if you would like to read more about it, we have a blog posted up on it on our blog, beneficially yours. Next slide, please. Another case, very recent out of the Eleventh Circuit, that anyone, any company that has a top hat plan and is looking at terminating it, particularly if you're located in the Eleventh Circuit, should keep an eye out on. Company decided to terminate its top hat plan for highly-paid executives and plans unfunded. The company said, okay, we're going to pay you out the actuarially equivalent benefit of what you, we expect your annuity would be worth. And the Eleventh Circuit, and this is a pretty common situation for top hat plans that are being terminated, and the Eleventh Circuit said, no, no, you can't do that because some people would survive beyond the life expectancy of the, in the mortality tables. So they would have gotten paid more, they would have gotten paid more if you hadn't gone to a lump sum, and so you were injured and the district court was correct in, or at least allowed to say that the company had to go buy annuities on the market that were equivalent to the plan's annuities. And obviously, that increases costs and is counterproductive to an attempt at plan termination. So this is definitely something to keep an eye on, particularly if you are a plan sponsor of a top hat plan. And with that, and the next slide, please, I will turn it over to Amanda.
Thanks, Jules. So everybody, we're going to be switching gears a little bit and going back to school with respect to ERISA benefits claims in the context of healthcare reimbursement disputes. We represent insurers, claim and plan administrators, employers, and managed care organizations in both health benefits and payer provider disputes. So we're looking at everything from that particular angle, from the angle that we view the world, right, on behalf of our clients. Next slide, please. All right, new case comes in. First question you should ask, what do they want and how do they want it? Because when we're dealing with healthcare reimbursement disputes, there's really kind of two typical claims you see. Under ERISA Section 502a1b, that allows participants to sue or to recover benefits due under the terms of the operative health benefit plan, including enforce rights or clarify future benefits. So these are the straightforward claims that typically involve a denial of benefits based on plan terms and a plaintiff saying, whoa, 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 I think I'm entitled to something more or something different. In contrast, you have Section 502a3 claims, and that provides a catch-all for equitable relief when there's no other ERISA provision that offers an adequate remedy. This is where, you know, you see breach of fiduciary duty claims coming in. So the difference really lies in the nature of the harm. If the harm is not receiving the benefits due under the plan, the flag should go up. This is a 502a1b claim. So then we think about specificity and plausibility. In the ERISA context, you're in federal court, and there's a heightened pleading requirement under ifball and twombly, right? That's the, you know, the famous ifball and twombly, we cite it in every single one of our motions to dismiss. And specificity and plausibility are two things that we particularly like to hammer early on in these cases because we say to the court, the plaintiff here needs to be specific in what plan provisions were breached that entitled them to the benefits that they seek here. And it has to be more than we believe that these were covered claims or covered services, therefore were entitled to benefits. Under, again, our view of the world, that doesn't lend itself to a plausible claim. So what do I mean by plausible? You have to go through early on in these cases, you get the new case in the door, you've already answered the questions of what do they want and how do they want it? But you need to look at the plan and you need to look at the administrative record to say, are there certain provisions within the plan that need to be triggered for there to both be coverage? And then what is the reimbursement methodology in the plan if they're in fact covered services? So these are things that can be raised early and often and should be raised early and often when you're on the depend side. All right, let's say you're, for whatever reason, not in federal court. Somebody didn't want to play ball in the correct venue, again, from my perspective. You need to understand removal, and you need to understand ERISA preemption. So ERISA preemption is broad, right? But it operates through two distinct doctrines. You have complete preemption and you have conflict preemption, and each has different implications for jurisdiction and litigation strategy. And thinking about removal, because you find yourself maybe in state court, you have to look at complete preemption, which arises under ERISA Section 502a. It's a jurisdictional doctrine, and that allows a case to be filed in state court to be removed to federal court even if the complaint only asserts state law claims. Why? Because Congress intended ERISA's civil enforcement scheme to fully occupy the field. We're dealing with ERISA benefits, we're dealing with an ERISA plan. What is it that you're actually seeking here? If it's benefits under the plan, you're in complete preemption land. So if a claim could have been brought under Section 502a, it's deemed a federal claim regardless of how it's labeled or characterized. This allows the federal court to re-characterize state law claims and make them federal ones. On the other hand, just for completeness, this isn't, you know, this isn't really tied to removal, conflict preemption, that's governed by ERISA Section 514a. It doesn't confer federal jurisdiction to support removal. Instead, it invalidates state law claims that relate to ERISA plans by conflicting with ERISA's objectives. So those are the arguments that you raise in the context of motions to dismiss, other types of dispositive motions, where you say that the type of claim is conflict preemption because it's inconsistent with ERISA's exclusive remedial scheme. So it's essential to understand this distinction, right, when you're defending against ERISA claims, but also in navigating removal strategy in ERISA litigation. Now, I will tell you, we could do a five-hour presentation, it would probably bore you to tears, honor removal, complete preemption, things that you could probably bring into a removal petition. Although removal petitions are really supposed to be notice pleading standards, more and more courts are requiring substance and additional documentation to support removal. It will bore you to tears, but it's super critical in your practice to understand how you can get a case up to federal court when it's an ERISA case, because you should not be litigating those types of claims in state court. Okay. Just other things to think about, early dispositive motions, going back to specificity and plausibility, right? Really challenging, do the allegations point to specific provisions in the plan that warrant additional benefits? Have they demonstrated coverage? Have they demonstrated that the relief sought is consistent with the reimbursement methodology laid out in plan terms? And overall, it's just important to understand and explain to certain Um, and overall, it's just important to understand and explain to certain courts because sometimes we're not explaining things to judges, but we're explaining things to law clerks. And ERISA is complex. It's unequivocal that claims for benefits rest with the terms of the operative plan documents. So if somebody is seeking relief contrary to those plan terms, that is fair for you to challenge early and often in the case. Next slide, please. All right, ERISA standing assignments. So, um, when we're thinking about healthcare reimbursement disputes, they come in two flavors. You have the, the member or participant suing for additional benefits or you have an out of network provider that seeks to sue on those same benefits by virtue of an assignment. Um, they say that they have the derivative right to sue. Because under ERISA, only plan participants, beneficiaries and fiduciaries typically have standing to sue. Um, the other types of third parties that may sue, um, are debt collectors, right? Folks that, um, are dealing with out of network claims and they seek to assert uh, standing to sue for ERISA benefits by virtue of, um, an assignment of benefits. Now, there's a whole bunch of different stuff that, that may be implicated under, under that structure, but that is something that is asserted regularly. Um, so courts have generally recognized that assignments can confer standing if the assignment clearly includes the right to sue. Now, what does that mean when you're evaluating whether or not a plaintiff has standing in the context of a healthcare reimbursement dispute? If there is language within the complaint that describes the assignment, you have to look at what that language says, does that actually confer the right to a certain ERISA claim? If they attach the assignment, which some courts and some jurisdictions say is required, is it old, is it out of scope, is it not properly executed? Are there other defects? Did, that, was that assignment submitted during the administrative process such that you have a copy of it in your administrative record? And you could say to the court, I don't think this assignment is valid, such that this out of network provider doesn't have standing. Uh, one case that I'll just flag, i- it's a case out of New Jersey, it's University Spine Center versus Empire. Um, it was from twenty twenty-eight, or, no, I'm sorry, two thousand eighteen. Um, the court there dismissed a complaint where the assignment upon which the plaintiff relies dated nearly a month prior to the medical services provided. That's how granular you can get when you're disputing whether or not an out of network provider has standing to sue based on an assignment. Other things to consider, um, and further complicating matters is many ERISA plans include anti assignment clauses, which courts generally enforce. These clauses can block providers from suing even with assigned assignment. So while assignments can provide a path to standing, their effectiveness truly depends heavily on jurisdiction, contract language and plan terms. And so this is a key strategic consideration. While we're on ERISA standing, I do want to mention one thing. Ian mentioned earlier Thole in the context of defined benefit plans. But I will say that Thole, um, is finding its way into, you know, kind of typical ERISA benefit litigation where we're thinking, when we're thinking about health benefits. Because the Supreme Court reasoned in Thole that courts should look as to whether a plaintiff's economic position will change based on whether they win or lose a lawsuit. And, um, recently several courts have taken the position that if an out of network provider, um, is not seeking to balance bill a member and that member was already reimbursed subject to the health benefit plan, that plaintiff, that member no longer has a concrete stake in the lawsuit and has relied on Thole as kind of the linchpin, uh, to make that determination that there's no article three standing. So Thole does extend outside the defined benefit plan context. The other thing to think about is you have to know who your plaintiff is. So if, if there is a lawsuit brought by a member or beneficiary seeking benefits under the plan, but there's a record of a valid assignment of benefits, that plaintiff no longer has article three standing, um, at least in certain jurisdictions like the Third Circuit. And the Heniman University Hospital versus Allshore case, the court held that if there's a valid assignment, the hospital becomes the only claimant because the original claimant gave up her right to claim by the assignment. So that's just something to keep in mind. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm gonna go quickly here because I know we're down to five minutes. Um, so waiver arguments, they're raised often by plaintiffs, especially healthcare providers. And they've developed several strategies to, to argue a waiver of anti assignment provisions. Most are regularly rejected by courts. And also there's been a wave of power of attorney theories. But ultimately with the power of attorney, uh, attorney theories, ERISA restricts the right to sue again to plan participants, beneficiaries and fiduciaries. So while courts have allowed derivative standing based on valid assignment of benefits, a power of attorney is not equivalent to an assignment. It authorized someone to act on someone else's behalf, but it does not transfer ownership of the claim. That is the key distinction between an assignment of benefits and a power of attorney. Um, okay, next slide, please. Okay, so in these cases, there's, there, you know, out of network payer provider disputes or ERISA benefits disputes. There are several key narratives that we always see. On the provider side, some of the narratives, uh, include arguments that, listen, we're an out of network provider. We don't have a contract for rates. We're not in network, we're foreign to the plan, we want our billed charges. We believe we're entitled to the charges and we believe that they're reasonable. And those types of allegations are typically found within different types of state law claims. Obviously, we mentioned earlier, conflict preemption on the defense side. Um, we believe that if there's an ERISA benefit plan at issue, right? And that a state law claim, um, you know, seeks relief that relates to the ERISA plan or the ERISA plan needs to be physically lifted in front of the judge's face to make a determination as to ultimate relief, uh, that type of claim is conflict preempted. Next slide, please. On the defense side, there's a whole bunch of different narratives. If we're not dealing with emergency services, we'd like to make the point that, that if you're going to an out of network provider, these are member choice. We also note that for out of, for an out of network provider, they take the patient and the member subject to the terms of their ERISA plan. We also make the point that, that plans contain conditional out of network reimbursement methodologies. Key emphasis unconditional. First, there needs to be coverage. Then there's typically a methodology. A lot of times it'll be tied to a percentage of Medicare rates, which is a cost based methodology. And we can't pay out or reimburse every dollar charge because that would upend health insurance, make premium, uh, payments, uh, skyrocket, and it's just not workable, uh, under the context of ERISA. Next slide, please. Okay, exhaustion. So under ERISA, courts have consistently held that participants must exhaust a plan's internal claims and appeals process before filing a suit in federal court. And the rationale is straightforward, right? Exhaustion, it promotes consistency, it, uh, it should alleviate a lot of frivolous litigation. And it also allows plan administrators to correct errors internally and also develop a full record. So you should know, um, early on in the case, whether or not a specific plan requires multiple levels of appeal. Because if there's allegations in a complaint of no appeals or of a singular appeal, that opens the door to arguing failure to exhaust even on a twelve B six motion as a basis for dismissal. Next slide, please. I'm coming right in at two minutes, everybody. Um, okay, no right to a jury trial. Uh, the, again, these are themes, uh, Ian noted earlier that there's, uh, that's not as cut and dry as we believe it should be. Um, but ERISA's remedial scheme is intentionally narrow. Remember that over and over, it's intentionally narrow. And courts have consistently held that things like punitive damages are not available. So even if a plan administrator or claims administrator acts unfairly or even in bad faith, the law doesn't allow for punitive damages. Uh, the most a participant can typically recover is the benefit they were wrongly denied and maybe attorney fees if the court finds it appropriate. We routinely move to strike relief sought in complaints outside of ERISA's remedial scheme, including extra contractual damages. And yes, while there is a growing debate, uh, the prevailing rule is that ERISA benefit claims do not carry a right to a jury trial. So if there's a jury demand in a case seeking ERISA benefits, you better move to dismiss or you better move to strike it and you should do it early. Um, again, we could talk all day about this stuff and more than happy to ask, uh, more than happy to answer any questions uh, as it relates to, to healthcare reimbursement disputes. The, the claims asserted therein and different strategies, right, on the defense side.
Hey, thank you, Amanda, and I know we're at the top of the hour now. Um, the CLE code is S S as in Cyfarth Shaw, zero seven eight zero. That's S S zero seven eight zero. If you scan the QR code, it will bring you to the link for the form to fill out to get, um, CLE credit.
With that, I think we're at a wrap. Uh, thanks, everybody, for joining us today and thanks, Jules and Amanda, for your insights. Um, as, as noted, feel free to reach out to any of us with specific questions or follow up. And, uh, we will certainly get back to those who asked questions through the Q and A with responses as soon as we can. Thank you very much.